Walter DeMula, Steve Breck.
Happy to be here. Hallowed gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us with the nice weather and pleasant temperatures. Father, we ask that you just bring a sense of peace and community to the meeting today, that patience and kindness and your love will prevail throughout the decisions that are discussed, the topics discussed, the decisions that are made today. Or we just give you all the glory and the praise with thanksgiving in our heart in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you, Walter.
This meeting order at nine o'clock. County Commissions.
Meeting six sixty twenty twenty-three. Where would you live? Please.
At Central United States. The United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice for all.
So Michael's asked to have a public hearing postponed, which we have to do a vote for. For the ten ten thirty deal. This is that kind of. I think he's waiting to get some more information back from the company to do the investigatory work. So. Can we just handle that at five? Okay. And then Title twenty-five, the hospital had an issue. They won't be here until one o'clock. And the partner of extension isn't ready, I guess. It's missing some signatures. So Mike, what I'm saying is as well. He thought it was great, but it's.
The partner of extension?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're just scratching it out, I guess. I can't, I think if that works good. We just change executive session. The motion for continuance.
Can I add something to your business?
Think you can. I want to report notes for it.
To change the agenda, new business?
Yeah. What is it?
I wanted to talk about meeting procedures a little bit.
Will you do that on your. Is it just for this, or is it so we're talking on the mirror?
Yes.
I suppose it's probably technically you're supposed to have such sort of thing. I think there's room for it.
To me, it's a little bit of just administrative.
Mike Beer and all business.
I guess I don't know if it would be under our business because I don't know if we have written meeting procedures in bylaws. Do you acknowledge to me?
We don't really follow the Robert rule of orders. So I mean, we're just.
It'd be our own.
Yeah. Was this County Commissioner Association? Isn't there kind of bylaws within that?
I'll wait and put it on the agenda if I have to.
Let's do that. That way we can do some research on it.
I've already done a research.
Well, that would give us a chance.
That's why I wanted to tell you what I found out, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's okay with you.
No, but.
My head, my heartburn on is that I'm getting a chance to do some research on it.
Well, I wanted to visit with you about that part of it. And what I found out.
Kind of reason for twenty-four or the forty-eight hour dollars or whatever. All right. We'll be in a. Yeah. Any other additions, changes to the agenda? I mean, first a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor of approving it as amended? Can you say aye?
Aye.
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 Closed. All right. What do we got here, Becky?
I think not.
Is there any session now?
No, that's what I did.
It was? Oh, okay.
The comment. About the comment this morning?
So I, my name is Carrie Gross. I'm the, I'm Carrie Gross from Salt Creek Grove. I am here today to present a resolution to the county commissioners. And it's a, it's a resolution to correct the public record from the meeting of November second, two thousand and twenty-one. I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Weston County elected officials are committed to accuracy in the official records of the county. And whereas the official meeting minutes are important for historic accuracy, as well as precedence for future commissions regarding researching similar decisions. And whereas the Weston County Board of Commissioners official minutes of November second, two thousand and twenty-one are inaccurate due to the six court district ruling, C V two one five three, in which the court finds that voting by secret or anonymous valid violates the Public Meetings Act. And whereas the Weston County Board of Commissioners official meeting minutes of November second, two thousand and twenty-one state Attorney Michael Skolken answered all questions from the crowd, including that the board voting anonymously was done legally. And whereas the official audio recordings of the meeting, as well as the court ruling, show this statement to be incorrect. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Weston County Commissioners vote to strike, annotate, amend, or otherwise correct the statement. Attorney Michael Skolken answered all questions from the crowd, including that the board voted anonymously was done legally from the Weston County Board of Commissioners official meetings of November second, two thousand and twenty-one meeting and from the public record in all forms, written and electronic. If you will review the reporting from that meeting, Mr. Skolken actually did not make the statement that it was done legally, so the minutes were incorrect. And then in light of the ruling, I just don't want other county commissioners in your position ten years from now, when we're all not here, to go looking through the record in thinking that this was okay to do and seeing these official minutes that say it was legal, in your words. So I'm just asking that those, that statement be corrected in the official minutes of two thousand and twenty-one so that whenever from now, people don't look at that and say it was done legally. So that's what the resolution is asking for.
You're wanting us to vote on this today?
I would like that, yes.
I have a problem doing that because it wasn't advertised on our agenda. We have no comment from, if any public, other, other citizens want to comment on this, they can't, they're, if we do this resolution, they don't have had no opportunity to comment on it.
So it says, the resolution, all I'm asking for is that statement to be stricken from the record. And if you, Michael, a few of us were here that day, and I know Michael Skolken didn't say that. And I reviewed the recording of that meeting minutes, and Michael Skolken didn't say that. So I don't know why it would be a problem to remove it from the record because it's actually an inaccuracy in the meeting minutes. I'm not saying it's anyone's fault. I'm just saying it was, it's an inaccuracy in the public record.
The issue I have with it is I haven't had a chance to listen to the meeting minutes or read them. Like if it was on the agenda, I'd have known. You're coming forward with it, so.
I get that.
I have no issue putting it on the next agenda and we can address it once I have an opportunity to listen to what was actually said.
I get that, but there's also, again, you saw what happened today at nine A M. when this Commissioner Huber asked for something to be added to the agenda. She was given a lot of flack, so I thought that it would be best to. I just wanted this presented on the public record, so.
I guess my thoughts on it are this happened in the past and correcting it so that it's right doesn't seem like it would cause any harm, nor, I don't know that it needs to be, more or less being their whole business, not new. It's always been put out to check the minute for accuracy, and if it's not accurate, let's make it accurate. That's my thoughts.
Michael.
The only thing I think is, I think it relates to that lawsuit. And I'm not trying to stop anything from happening. I just don't know if you need to just talk with Mr. Ruby about it, since it's all part of that settlement that happened. So that's, that's my thought.
I guess my question to you is, is the settlement was already made, and it was decided that it was by no one's fault, but it was illegal. So what's the argument of correcting the minutes? Correcting the minutes is accuracy and it's not what happened.
I just don't know the, I know it's what was announced in court, and I just don't know the end of announcing the implications you had and what the end of announcing the settlement were beyond that. So I just might want to run it by Mr. Ruby.
So I guess all I'm asking for is this more in-depth chance to listen to the minutes and gain information on it. Have you listened to the minutes recently? Did you know?
Not recently, but I, I didn't listen to them at one time. I put it together a while.
Yeah, a year ago. So I just, I would like to have that opportunity. I personally would like to see it to the whole business. And if they're inaccurate, I got no problem.
I, I'm glad Mr. Carter, I mean, if it, if there need to be correction, I'm a hundred percent for correcting them, but correcting without us having the chance to review them is trying to, really not fair to accuracy.
Would you be opposed to putting it on the next agenda?
No, I, I don't know about my schedule for the next meeting, but I'll do my very best to, to be here if you'd like. I just, I, I just thought it was an important thing to bring up. But actually, I mean, if you want to stricken all language of the court settlement from it, that's fine. I, it doesn't matter. The, the thing that matters most to me is the accuracy in the public record. And, you know, I would think Attorney Skolken, of all people, would like to have the public record of his own comments to be correct. So thank you for considering it.
Put it on old business for next meeting. That way we have a chance to check the rec minutes and everything, make sure they're correct.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby.
Are there any other public comment?
Hi, this is Alan Zsinski, the owner. I just wanted to, out of this conversation, because you're going to review the recording, and I was wondering if you could have that sign by for the public that day, so we could hear it also. Thank you.
Public count. Just letting you guys know. From your information, we did get the victim witness funding. We have enough money to cover everything without expense to the county. Just so you know, it's a reimbursement program, and that kind of lays out the details of it. And I'm going to plan on start advertising for the position today. It has the job description in the back there. Becky did run numbers for salary, insurance, retirement, and it looks like the funding we got will completely cover it in what we do.
Will this be starting in this year, budget, or July? July. Then the other public comment.
I got an issue. I'm Scott, I live up in Painted Hills. And I talked to Becky about getting on the next week's list, so it is on the agenda. The reason I'm here today is I kind of want to let you guys know that what we're, what we're discussing coming up is the traffic up there has gotten horribly out of hand. And I live on that corner. You don't even have to tell anybody where I live. I just tell them I have more of the white fence gets hit every time. I don't have to even get an address out. But I, I just got hit again this weekend. That's three times inside of twelve months. And I really feel there's an issue on that intersection coming off of Painted Hills onto Kenwood Drive there that we really need to do something with. And I don't know, I guess it'll give you guys time to think about it. We're going to talk about it at the next meeting. I just, it, it, when they, the problem is when they hit that vinyl up there and they wipe it out and they run away and I don't get them. It costs me between six and nine thousand dollars to fix that fence every time. And I got to turn it in on my insurance. And which I do have the insurance for, which is fine, but it's not because eventually they're going to be, you know, what's going to happen. But I think we need to do something with the traffic up there somehow. There's, needs to be some signage or turn that intersection into a three-way stop or, I'm just showing some ideas out there. I don't know, guys. I talked to Garrett about it yesterday, so he's kind of up to speed about it, too. He's the one that recommended that I came in here today, so. I guess that's kind of what I got for you. It's, you can talk to anybody up in that community, and it's just, it's, it's turned into a disaster.
Well, Jim's on the, Hanson's on the agenda for later. We'll mention him so he may get some, along the way, figure out what we can do up there.
Well, there, there needs to be something, I don't know, you know, extra patrols, too, or some, I don't, I don't know. I mean, there's, I know it's a big county and we can't just park the cop up there, but we, you know, I'm just asking for some kind of something. We're trying to, in the process of trying to sell that property right now, and that looks real good, you know, when you got it on the realtor. It's, it's not a real good selling point right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Just, just to back that up a little bit. Yeah, the traffic's, the speed up there has got totally ridiculous. You drive along there, you can see where people are going and you ditch. It's all, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I like to look at root cause. I know Scott's fence keeps getting hit. I like to look at root cause. And to me, root cause up there is speed. You got two speed limit cars, one on each end of the road. You can't even read them. I'm not a big advocate of signage because coming from the Glen Canyon National Recreation Area, yeah, we had way too much signage, but the signage that we do have is not, to me, adequate. And I think maybe some stop signs up there because when you, you have three different roads. You got Fairgrounds Road that goes on to Painted Hills. Painted Hills goes on to Kenwood Drive. So you're changing roads and there's no signage for that other, a T and a curve, you know. I think stop signs up there would help give law enforcement a little more stand on as far as enforcement. I say, to me, the root cause is just speed. To take care of the speed, these other issues will probably go away. It's all that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to. Drax, executive session. Okay. Well, then we will.
Sixteen four four oh five A.
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion for executive session sixteen four four oh five A. Aye, aye, aye.
I second it.
The motion brought to second going to executive session sixteen dash four dash four oh five A. Aye, aye, aye. Which is certifying litigation. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd ask Susan Bridge.
I'll say it. All voters please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Make a motion to the chairman, so you get your, on the order, or a motion for continuance and a signature on the order for continuance. And secondarily, that motion to, call it, hire.
Hire a hearing examiner and a special prosecutor.
Hire a hearing examiner and special prosecutor. Help with our, for the.
Second. The motion brought to second for the chairman's signature on a motion for continuance and to allow county attorney to hire a press, a special prosecutor and.
Hearing examiner.
Hearing examiner. Is there any other discussion? During that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Fair board. Fair board, come on in. I've got five chairs up there, four, we can drag this up. They said fair board.
I was hoping you would name Mr. Klein, sir, right there. I was hoping you would name Mr. Klein. He has to be.
Why, see, you see me late.
Okay, David's going to explain, well, what we're asking for, no, I'm not going to fret everybody. What, what's happening is with us all doing the free work, we're not able to, we're not able to get everything that we need done. And so we're finding that we have to have contract labor to assist us in some of that. We're asking that we get a set, a, a set number of funds out of the salary line item and move it to maintenance line item. Am I saying that right, Becky? But we looked and you're paying your contract person out of your salary line item. We have one, I'm talking, I'm talking about like cat services for maintenance. That's not coming up. You understand what I'm saying? Yep. And so we have some things that we need to get done before the fair. And there is. And there's, even though five of us are sitting here, we all have full-time things that we're doing and we need to hire people. And so what we're asking is to transfer some of the money if we're not, we don't have an employee right now, full-time employee, to transfer some of that line item money from, from our salary position over to our maintenance position. Because we're not going to put out our application to hire until the new budget. And we have some application, we've already got that rolling. But to take care of the immediate problem that we are faced, we don't want to go over budget. When we have this money, we're not using in the salary line item. We would like to transfer it over maintenance to help us take care of all the things we need to get done before the fair.
Do we need to add to the budget, Jeff, within our main budget?
I didn't hear.
You know, if you're staying within your main budget, my question was, do we need to do a budget amendment, even though, because you're staying within your budget?
Right. Well, what I was told by Becky is that we have to stay within our
It's coming out of salary, yeah.
So we would like to transfer some of that from that line item to the maintenance line item.
I can say that about, if we transfer, do a line item transfer from salary out, we have to, just because the way salaries go.
Right, because you have all of the other, you have insurance and all of that.
But if it was just, if it was just one of the other line items, it wouldn't have to. We don't think it would budget.
But where we have, where we don't have a full-time employee right now, that money is sitting there and we need the help to hire the additional. We, we have our contract person who is now available for more hours. And we'll, we'll utilize her, but there's some things she is not hired to do nor is she qualified.
You know, I, I personally have no problem with, with you moving forward, moving that, doing a budget, transfer out of the salary into your maintenance to take care of stuff, because you're not using the salary.
And it's temporary. It's not forever. It's for this month.
I'm gonna catch up. So we just submit any contact labor that we hire under salary?
No.
Like Jim doing? Oh, okay. I'm trying to catch up.
There's been, there's been some of that. Yeah, we've got a couple of big projects that we've put in the budget for the last two, three years. And we're having a heck of a time with that job here, Hydraulics. We've got, we've got to get those blocks fixed. We're blowing hoses off of them and, you know, it's under pressure. Everybody knows it. We get someone in the right position, you're gonna get a little, put, put under your shins and stuff like that. It is a big project, but it's gotta be done. We're looking at $3,000 to $4,000 to get those two blocks done. We use that little four-wheeler quite a bit at fair, you know. Yeah, well, basically every day, you know, it's just cheaper than, than driving vehicles. And we gotta have a front end done on it. Cara had an estimate on it. I think it was a little high, but it was a couple thousand dollars to get that completely redone. Um, I, I don't know where we're at. I'd like to request that we actually get, I, I haven't seen it. If you've been mailing it to us, if you have, where we're actually set. I think we're probably over on our maintenance. It is. But we've got a lot of little stuff we've been fixing out there. And we need to continue doing the little things to get, get it done. As far as fair, but so, I'd like, like I said, you know, I'd like to see some of the gold there. Let's use it and and just move it forward.
Do you want a number?
Well, I was gonna just see if we could just transfer all of that, because you're not gonna have any more, you're gonna have
Well, we have a salary, we have a contact employee.
We have, we have Kami for this. If we, if we took Kara's money and stuffed it over there, that'd be great. And, and we probably ought to be looking at probably give this attempt to kind of help us out a little bit through this month, you know, being going. And then we'll get an action. But so we left attempts and that stuff alone, but I don't know what Kara's total amount was that she had in there.
So you only have 27,000 left in that account?
So move to, for salary. So if we move 12 of that, we could get all of our repairs done.
I think we could be, we could be working on that, getting ready for next year.
You'll just have to make sure you have the invoices this month, so that comes out of this year.
Yes, ma'am. And that's 20th?
And some of that stuff is the stuff we have for next year and next year, but we just, we gotta get it done.
We would really like to come in and say, you know what we asked for? We, we can take this off and we can take this off, because we got it done.
We'll 12,000 cover it.
That's your, that's your Yeah, I agree.
You know, if we're, if we're going through this motion, what, what was Kara's, what, at the
Well, right now, there's 20,387 left in that account.
We're not gonna use it for the full-time employee. Let's just ask for all of it.
Well, no, no, that's, that's where you take Kami's out.
Oh, no, I just, I Yeah, okay. Because Kami's won't be, she's only been putting in
She's gonna be working more hours.
Yeah, let's do it. So, but
I mean, 20, because Kami's not getting 7.
No, she's not.
So if you need 20.
Yeah, if we took the 20 out, and like I said, we'll manage it the best we can. We're just gonna be doing stuff we need to do.
We'll be playing catch-up.
And then get your tractor fixed.
Get that fixed, get the tractor fixed. I think the county shop pretty well got our water truck.
No.
Uh, no, there's, there's still some serious issues with the water truck. Um, we got it mobile.
But not
If someone comes up with an old truck they want to get rid of, like the county, see if we can grab it. We need to update that.
That's a truck that has an issue.
And that water truck is necessary.
Yeah, yes. Okay, so with the, we favor 20,000. We need that motion. Sure gonna need a motion out of that affair.
You know, why not a motion?
Out of the salary, then we go repair maintenance.
Repair maintenance, so I'm 15. I make a motion to move 20,000 out of our general third round salaries, which is 100, uh, 15, 00, 15, to general fairgrounds repair and maintenance, which is 115, 00, 21. In the amount of 20,000 equals 7,000, 387, 69, we need salaries now.
I accept that.
Do you have a motion brought to second? To move 20,000 out of the fairgrounds salary to the maintenance line item. Do you have the numbers? Is there any other discussion? During that, all those favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. And you'll be
That'll be done at the next meeting of our motion.
Okay, but we can start getting that done and get those invoices. Okay, and we'll have our people get us their invoices.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's the only one I know I could drive over. She's never seen.
I do. You want me to give you the Yeah, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you, Drake. 11:30. Warren's, 70879. We need to decide whether we pay him or we hold him. These are the ones that Michael was looking at.
He said he was gonna
Yeah.
Not pay him.
We just gotta make it official.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion and not pay 70 780, or 70879.
Second. Having motion brought to second, if you not pay Warren, 70879. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Nope. We can put out that. Now it's official. All right, Jimmy. You're up.
Did you guys get my email about the SLIP grant?
Yes.
They did a premise to use the remaining 210,000 dollars in that grant for gravel for the Chine River Road with the 20% match, which would be about 42,000. So could we get in roughly 31,000 tons of gravel for color 35 ton? And I was up officials this morning and they're crushing right now. I thought they'd probably crush whatever we need, so I want to commit to it.
I would, if you'd be crazy not to commit to it.
I think the only way, you know, when they gave us the December 31st timeline and I have emailed and asked for extension, I cannot get it applied from her. So I don't know what's going on there, but the only way we get it done, I think, is to bring on contract trucks. I thought that was stuff we'd have to do a little bit. It's good trucks.
Well, that much gravel, I mean, it'd be, you could get in the job to have it done, quick and so.
Well, you know, if we use contract trucks, we could do a playground near that road, you know, maybe be frozen.
Yeah.
About 40,000 dollars anyway.
So, I'll probably need a motion. For that affair.
I guess I was gonna ask you guys too, if you decide to do that, if you want to match that out of contract road fund or out of grant match account.
Yeah, boy, you've got time to money behind your road fund, don't you? Or we're gonna hammer it pretty hard.
Well, I guess if we use contract trucking, that's, that's gonna need a, close to 200,000 dollars out of there.
We need to use those travel, those travel funds too. By a certain date.
Yeah, maybe we can use that.
I can't remember the deadline on the line. There's two deadlines.
Yeah, speculation, no, not the one, if we use
Too good for remember the
That, do we take that or just the COVID?
I think both.
We'll have to ask if you can do that one.
We'll have to check on that.
Okay. I did bring that one up before and we'll keep aside and use.
Okay.
So Ask real quick, if you may make it. You'd like to know the date, I assume?
Probably yes. I just think on that, I really, you know, I can't wait for today.
Yeah.
I could tell that you were, you cannot even crush.
You're not able to even crush, that's for sure. I get busy out there right now. Getting asphalt and plant and stuff set up. Just calling some base clear up on top. Zoom, getting in and out of there. Is he done?
Yes.
What happened? That I get.
No. Please, I relate to that really well.
Don't you hate it when you pull a muscle sleeping?
Didn't even dream about it. You don't remember how you did it.
There she is. There she is.
I told you we were going slow. Yeah, I am kind of slow.
What you do?
Just walk, yeah, walk. Let's move back.
The tribal funds, we bring that in as revenue replacement.
I know we did the reports as revenue replaced, but and that one too? Yeah. Okay.
Do you, do you recall the digs, but it must have to be
No, but we can look.
One of them's different than the other one.
Yes, they are different. The rest, uh, not the rescue, but, yeah, the rescue plan, I think it's got a
End of 24. Yeah, that has to
December, isn't it?
Of 24.
Yeah.
Yeah. That one has to be, the big, the big one had to be December of 24.
Yeah, and I looked at the other one. I didn't Oh, have to look. I don't think there is one right now, but I have to make sure.
Well, we can use that, 200,000 that left on the grant for Chine River Road for this one.
It's on which one?
What was that, MRT grant, what kind of bridge?
Oh, yeah, that's the 300,000 that's put away that you guys have been spending.
No, that's for the NSF branches with the SLIP grant.
Okay.
Next, 210,000 left.
We just grant. This is the
We just had to request it. We've already, and they approved it. Where I guess they just want to decide where to match it.
Where we get the
Oh, you're matching. Okay.
Use some of that, that tribal funds for match.
Yeah.
We should be able to, we should
Should be able to use either one of them, shouldn't we?
Maybe.
But you're using the other one on the grade roads.
Yeah.
And there's a siren. Because that's what you used, most of the, you only got half of that one left.
Yeah, we used about first half of that one.
So maybe we'll try to, I, I'll have to go find my papers and see.
Okay. Well, I guess we can let Jimmy know he get hold of Gory out there and tell him to get that many tons of rock crushed with our name on it.
And we did owe, owe a little over 4,000 dollars worth of rock down there last month, so we're gonna go back.
So there's 400, there's almost half of the tribal.
And then 400,000 of the
Rescue plan. And it matures first, and that's what we should do, out of that rescue plan.
I think first one.
Yeah. It'd be a good way.
Yep.
Good touch.
Okay.
Yeah, whichever one, okay, God, whichever one.
I'll go back to Yeah, I'm gonna be happy to please.
All right, you got to go ahead then, while the guy's getting crushed.
I was gonna ask, I guess it's okay to have, wait, all that crushed 10,000 tons for, so four corners gravel, not all road. That was in the county, they probably might get included, you know, last year's Brooklyn, but you could, you could, for 70,000.
It needs to be done.
Yeah, I didn't have such much time.
Yeah. So you want the chair, the commissioner on?
We have a, made motion for it.
Make a motion for the, um, Florida County Commissioners to sign the county road reform project for Malo Road, County Road number five, for re-gravel, for three miles of road spaces.
Second. Having motion brought to second to submit, so to go reform the county road fund for three miles of Malo County Road. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried.
And I did give a gentleman a surrender board, but they committed to two million tons for three, eight loads.
We're doing B-3?
Yeah. Good. So they're not, it's like there's no over an hour weekend. We have quite a few washouts in that up to here. And one road we had shut down for a little while, I mean, there was still access to it. We can shut down, cross it. The coves have taken in to replace that bridge, last, Doug's water gun underneath one of those ends. And after that, tore it out and banned. I just wanted to hire Glenn Weiss and have him fix that. He started on a Thursday morning, had it done Friday afternoon, so it's down and fixed.
Those big ones off of the
Yeah, one of the float crossings in the county road. Yeah, and he set the bands in a hole or pump, bolts in the band or pump those. And kind of some other issues.
That would, we need to jump on quick, if we've got another rainy, took the whole crossing out.
Yeah.
Let's go and fix it. It's that, I guess.
There was a guy in Kenwood in here earlier with breakneck road, so he's got a
No, not breakneck. No. It is Painted Hills and Kenwood Drive intersections.
No, that road, does that have a study done on that where it can be, um, signed for speed? You know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Said there was speed limit signs on each end of it, can't read them either.
Yeah, I don't think they're legal.
What did it take? I mean, even at that T, there's no stop sign at that T. They didn't put a stop sign there to slow people down, because this fence has been taken out several times.
We should look.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, you should put a stop sign there. Then No, but I mean, you should put a stop sign there, then the sheriff can sit there and watch it.
Do you have to have a road survey or have, uh, for something like that?
I don't know if you would or not, but I don't think we'd want to any myself, talk to them, help.
But we do.
Thank you for the stupidity.
Well, but a stop sign would then enable an officer to be able to sight.
Well, but I think if we're gonna do that, you would have to probably have a second down, you'd have to go through Ryan. I think that would all have to be approved, I think, I know to make a speed limit later, you have to do that.
That'd be for like, speed limits, you'd put a stop sign.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, I guess, I have to, I don't know, I guess.
Do those guys charge, are there surveys to do that?
No, I don't know. You might pick up pre-schedule, or in the spring, they're supposed to be here on time.
Yeah. Maybe you should ask them about that, what it, what it would take, even get a stop sign there, at least, at least there's something, if there's a stop sign there, it's legally, place a stop sign, then we have something that's enforceable.
Yeah, and I can't remember, I gotta look at their last, he had something on there for a while, I don't remember what it was, but. I don't think it matters what you put out there, I'm gonna keep driving through it, and it's been like that up there for thirty years.
You know, even just those curb signs on crash cars, I felt a bunch there. But that's a lot of people that didn't know the road.
I mean, that one we can go through, throw a stop sign, we expense the loads, but I, you know, what if, it's not legal in life, I think.
Well, talk with them, you stay on, on the survey, if it take, whatever it take. Okay. Yeah. Well, I guess I have any questions to Jim. I guess you might stick around for the next one. Willard's gonna chew your. Come on, Willard, you're up next, you're under the window next.
I'm a little shaky, so don't let the mire me, but, you know.
I'm hoping to have a seat by Jimmy, he don't bite.
He does.
Yeah.
I did, I got a west, guy made up for me that people live out there, he got land, and we come up with thirty-nine, almost forty of us. And I, I'm the type of guy that, you know, them guys that are getting gravel and gravel and feel and trucking and blades and mowing their yards and their yards, they're, I think they should pay for their own. We shouldn't have to pay for it, where's our money going? Our money's just wasted, we can't even get five signs out there from nobody. We got them old wooden signs out there, everybody stops in landplace, says, where's this at, where's that at? I said, you gotta drive up to them dang signs. I said, to read them, I said, the county don't do nothing for us. I said, they don't bring out an inch of gravel, they won't mow the road ditches, they don't do anything. I said, our money's, and I'll tell you what, I'm gonna be lying, I'm not lying to you guys. I, I got a sign up there that says Crooked County in Ferguson Canyon Mayor, and I'll tell you what. I changed my county, cause, you know, this is twenty twenty-three, Biden changed the constitution and everything, hey, I think we need to change it. Hell, if he can do it, we can do it, but why are we paying, and now mine went up three hundred and some dollars? And the next guy told me his big house stuff went up about six hundred, that's a thousand dollars right there. All of our money, and we ain't got nothing. I mean, what do we get? Nothing. And I don't care if you pull this whole darned computer down, it would save us money, why can't, I asked for a hundred dollars from everybody from here, to help us gravel a little road, I've been graveling it for thirty some years, and I know. And everybody comes out, you guys come down with them damn cops, and they'll just come around that corner, seventy mile an hour probably, and just throw the gravel, this and that and stuff, and I tell you what, next time they pull that shit, I'm gonna take my John Deere out there, and I'm gonna cross the road, and I'll tell you what, I'll just have them lunch there. And they're not gonna pull that shit no more. I tell you, that's stupid. I mean, we gotta buy the gravel, and everybody just comes out and does whatever the hell they want. And I think that's sad. And I tell you what, if you guys can't afford a hundred dollars, and then raise mine three hundred and some dollars, and the next guy, that's a thousand dollars right there. How many thousands are you getting in, and we're getting nothing? Can't you give us a little bit of something? I mean, I'm probably mad and a little disgusted, but by God, I might as well throw that money out that window. I mean, come on, guys, this is twenty twenty-three, let's change a little bit of stuff. I'm, I'm a different guy, I like to be fair, I help people, I've done things for people, I open up them roads, and I mow the ditches, and I gravel that road, I put thirty some loads on it about two years ago, and nobody gave me one damn dime. And I'm getting tired of shit, and here I'm throwing money away. I think you guys could give us a little bit. I think, that's what I'm thinking, and I'm not saying I'm gonna get anything, everybody's laughing at my signs, they love my signs, and I said, well, I ain't done yet, when I get done and they don't help us, I'm putting a bigger sign up that says Crooked County has to help out Weston County Crooks, and that's what I'm doing, and I'll do her. Cause I got the land, I paid for the land, nobody gave me any money, I paid for everything, I'll put any sign up out there I want. And I mean that, I'm gonna order me one, if I don't get no help.
What?
They look at it right now, and they laugh at it, and strangers come out and look, what was this, Weston County or Crook County? I said, no, mine's Crook County, Crooked County, I got. You drive out there and look at them. And when they assess the places, they drive down the damn road, they look, don't they assess the size? Actually, I give eighteen to twenty bucks for each sign. Now you can't tell me, you guys can't go out there and spend a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars and put some damn sign up there so people could read it? I mean, what's wrong here? God, we're just out there in the dark, might as well shut the lights off. Cause we're, you guys are just, and to me, I grew up in the old towns, in the old country, that, that's trucks, that's me. I'm an old fashioned guy. And I'm not scaring nobody, I'm, I'm telling you.
Hey, Willard. I'm looking at the land map here, there was a stop sign at the end of that Ferguson Canyon Road where it apparently tees at your place. Would that solve a lot of the?
No, nobody, uh, only stop sign I've seen ever is up at the highway.
So this is a private road, right?
Yeah, it's private road with public access, that's what.
Privately maintained, public access.
Yeah, that's right, there you go. And the guy, they had that fire out there and stuff now, whoever it was, I don't know who it was, if it was county or whatever it was, told somebody, but he didn't tell me, he told somebody, you know, we're up and down that road a lot, and doing this and doing that, and everything, he says, you know, we should brought a little gravel up for you guys, and plated it a little bit for you, and I said, that ain't gonna never happen, and it never did. But I'm just trying to be fair, and that's the kind of guy I am. I like to be fair, and I'm being fair, and I help people, and I don't charge a dime. I bought my gas, I bought the gravel, I've done it for, since Gene Rehoney's out there, I've been out there thirty some years, and Gene always come up to me and said, why are you graveling again, why are you gravel, I said, I got a gravel road. But I spent a hell of a lot of money on that road, but someone said they didn't care if it was a county road, but Mike come over and told me, if we do a county road, he says, we can't open the snow or anything and stuff, and I said, help, somebody needs that, I'm gonna open it. I don't care what road it is. But I don't know, you guys gotta tell me what you're gonna do. If you don't wanna do nothing, that's fine, but I'm just asking, if the wheel don't squeak, I ain't gonna get no grease. That's the way I am.
And you're squeaking.
And I'm squeaking. But I don't know if anybody's gonna grease the wheel, and I'll let her fall off again.
What, what, what would you like us to do?
Well, I'd like to have some gravel a little bit, if I could. And I could get Mike to haul it, or if you guys would help us out with the semi or some, just a few seminoles. I mean, that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking for you to pave the damn road and, and spend a million dollars, I'm just asking for some help. Is all I'm asking.
So, Willard, what, you know, after you came in last time, I, I understand it a little bit better. The problem is.
Yeah.
They're private roads.
Right.
So unless everybody out there agrees and puts in a petition to possibly make him county, our hands are kind of tied. Because if, I need gravel on my driveway also, I could ask them to gravel it, but I don't think they will.
And then some guy told me, now, I ain't saying no names or nothing ever, but he told me, cause I worked for the county years and years ago, and he said, people even come out and tell me to gravel or blade their yard, and he said, I'd go blade their yard for them. And that's money, how are they, I'm not saying it is, but why are you guys taxing us then? Why is our taxes going up, why is our taxes going up? When you guys say that you, uh, it ain't no county, we can't do it, how can you guys tax us? Let us have our own county, well, I'll have payment out there in a few years.
But we'd be glad.
But that's what I have.
To look at your petition to come into the county.
Well, they, some of them don't want me to do it.
And that, and that's where, that's where the road is.
And some will, and some won't. Well, I, I don't wanna go above a lot of guys, I'm a good, I'm a decent guy, I'm not a perfect guy, but I tell you, I try to be fair. But if I gotta do that, I guess we'll forget the damn thing and tell somebody to let me do it, but they don't want me doing it, some of them. Some of them don't care what happens, if it's gravel road, county, whatever, but I'm, I'm the mayor out there. And I haven't got a check from the mayor, from anybody.
Can I, can I ask, there's, is there a certain percentage of the people that live there that would have to sign the petition? Is it a certain percentage of people?
Don't think they even have to be, they have to reside within a certain distance, they don't even have to.
They don't even have to be, so, is it a certain amount of signatures he'd need to get, I guess is my question.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, a lot of people sign it, but some people go and get pissed at me and say, hey, why did you go do that? We've had this road for a long time, I, I don't know.
Here's the problem though, if we give you three loads of gravel, you know how many people are gonna be pissed that we gave Willard three loads of gravel? So the only good option there is, is what Beer's talking about, and, and you don't have to get a lot of people to sign it. That's where the public hearing comes into effect, and.
Yeah.
Where people can say yes, no, you know, I mean. Unfortunately, these landowners create these problems and don't think forward into the future of, I'm selling a bunch of properties out here.
Yeah.
And then you guys get stuck with.
Yeah.
The bad end of the deal with having to fix access.
And then a lot of times, when I come in here before, I mean, years and years ago now, not just lately or anything, and they told me that they don't do no roads that just go in and come out the same way, so I thought, well, that's probably true. I can't tell you, but Vazinsky's up there, everybody's telling me, their road goes in out, cause he's a millionaire, and, and they took care of him. And I don't know that, when there's another road up there, I don't know the roads that well up here, and I'm not gonna lie to nobody. Uh, they, guy told me, there's two people that live down that road, and the county takes care of it, and that goes in and comes out, and they say behind the fountain here, you guys bladed it and stuff, and that goes in and comes out. There's roads around that you guys are taking care of and doing, and they were lying to me all these damn years. All these years they lied to me, that they don't take care of roads in and out.
We have, we have some dead in county roads.
Well, I got it, why it wasn't ours, ever, when they told me that they don't do them roads.
Well, they're never set up a petition to be in as a county road.
And we're in the subdivision, why can't we have our own?
That's, that's a conversation that maybe should happen with. Everybody that's a landowner out there saying, here's the deal.
Yeah.
You know, in that, in that area, you can do, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you could do a, like a improvement district.
Yeah, but they, none of them will pay you anyway.
Well, that's, that's the thing, everybody wants the.
Everybody wants to move out and don't give you none, heck, nobody's already got it, if it wasn't for Mike, Dennis and me, the roads are never open. Nobody opened it, they ain't got nothing out there. We got, they, just like me, from my place to my highway is the main road, and I'm not lying in a way. And they told me, somebody up the canyon come down and told me that he, he couldn't say no name, but he says, that's Willard's road from his place out to the highway, and I said, well, that's fine, I'll gravel it, and I'll take care of it, tell him I'll put a tow booth on the end, there else he can, uh, build his own road. I said, tell him that. Now, I'm trying to be fair, guys, that's all I'm trying to do.
I feel your pain, I'm on, I'm in the same over I'm at.
Well, they shouldn't, they should give you a little discount. That's what I'm saying, how can you guys say it's not a county road, or anything like this and that and stuff, and then could still come out and raise our taxes? Hell with that, let us take our taxes and build our road, we shouldn't have no right out there. I'm Crooked County now, so what are you gonna do now? I'm Crooked County, I put my signs up, now that's Crooked County, and now I'm not Weston County no more. I'm crooked. Now are you gonna still charge me, and I gotta help you guys in Weston County out? No, I gotta help you guys out, you guys have no right out there, if you ain't got no, give us no gravel, you don't have no right to give us gravel, you don't have no right to do this, you ain't got no right to do that, how about our rights? Where's our rights at? It's out the window. Hell no, we don't get no rights. You guys shouldn't be, you should be ashamed of yourselves, you know, I'm a god, I believe in God, and I believe in God, I'll tell you what, a lot of them people are gonna be in the fire, and I hope I'm there, and I'm gonna say, burn, burn you bastards, cause you guys were crooked, and you, you got your choice, and I mean that, I don't mind speaking up, I'm mad, and I'm disgusted. Just like the address I'm in, they changed my address to, I think, thirty-six or whatever it is, and I went in and told them, and I just told them again lately, that it's Five Percy Canyon Road, I don't know what's gonna happen when I call an ambulance or anything like that. I'm gonna tell them Five Percy Canyon Road, cause you guys say you ain't got no rights out there, no gravel, no nothing, but you go change my address, and you go do this, and you go do that, and you'll do this and that, but you can't say, oh, I brought you some gravel out, I would really be in trouble, but you guys ain't in trouble doing, doing, uh, doing different things, you guys can do what you wanna do, and I get nothing, and hell with it, let's get something together here and say, hey, if we're gonna be taxing you guys and doing this and that, so. Hey, give everybody a little gravel, give you a little gravel, take a hundred dollars of your money and give you a hundred dollars for the gravel. Is that sad?
A hundred dollars to get my gravel.
Well, I know, but over, over thirty some years, I've had a hell of a pile of gravel.
I just, our, our hands are tied, Willard, if we.
Yeah, you ain't tied to, I'll tell you what, you're not tied to charging us money and raising the price of, you're not tied there. You're telling me.
That's not our. That's not our doing.
Yeah, but I don't care, who are you guys here for, just to sit, tell them, tell them down that we got people that are, just like me with the boss. When I told him, when I was working stuff, I'd say, yeah, I'll do it that way, but I tell you what, if, when they chewed my ass out, I said, you go talk to that man.
See, our, the taxes are set by the state.
Well, yeah, they're crooks, so what the hell.
And where you're seeing what, all the, what the taxes you're going up, what actually the county receives is such a very small portion of that. What do we collect, seventy some mils?
I don't care if you charge ten dollars.
Well, we, we're collecting for like seventy, I'm just pulling like seventy-two mils.
Yeah.
The county's portion, it's only twelve mils.
Yeah, that's fine.
So as that, just say, if your taxes have seventy dollars, we get twelve dollars of that, seventy if it goes on.
Yeah, I know, I'm not saying that, but do you guys gotta keep them roads up for them every year, perfect, perfect, perfect? Probably say, well, this year we could back off a thousand or two or so, and say, we could help this guy out a little bit and that guy. Do we have to have fancy roads and mow their ditches, can't they get a tractor to mow their old end ditch, like I do? I mean, I'm just different.
If it's set up as a county road, then we get money back from the state to maintain our county roads.
Yeah.
If it's not up, set up a county road, we don't get any money to maintain it.
And I guess I'm, as a mayor, I guess I don't get nothing out of it either.
Get everybody out there to.
I'm a mayor, it's.
Have a county road, that's.
Well, how about me as a mayor? And I get no check? You guys got any budget for me? Cause I know what I'd do with it, I get a check, I'll guarantee it'll go on the road, it won't put in my pocket. I'm a fair guy.
Willard, you were saying that you have some homeowners that don't want you to do anything, correct?
Right.
And see, therein lies the problem too. If we do give you something, then they come in and say, you did this for him, they want something. They want something else.
But if you got the main road, like Garrett was saying, we could probably help you with the main road, then everybody's benefits right there. Just do a little bit on the main road. Be like, do the whole damn county. I'm just saying, do the main road, everybody goes in and out the main road. I'm not looking for myself to say, hey, I got a nice little road. You guys go back and then run over junk.
That should be your petition, to have the one mile or whatever into your house.
Yeah.
To be county road.
Yeah, but, uh.
And then you don't have to worry about what anybody else thinks down the road.
Yeah, well, I'd like to try it, but like I said, I.
That would be the way to do it though, he's right. I mean, that would be the way to handle it. Petition to petition.
I have a pile so place, let me sneak in and get a couple of them. They don't have to know. I'll just tell my boss.
Just tell him the mayor.
No, I could be as crook as anybody else, huh? Or not.
And I know, I know you're really upset, but you, but that's probably, if you petition to make that a county road, then we can help you.
Well, yeah, but why are you guys?
Any argument, that, that your neighborhood was set up originally as, as a subdivision with private roads. It wasn't made county roads. If you make that a county road, we can help you. It's not that we don't want to help you.
Yeah, but a lot of people don't want it.
So just do your road. Petition to do your road, straight into your house.
Yep, that's the first mile, just do it.
They tell me I can't move snow or anything. Does that mean I can't go on the road if the road's plugged and you guys can't get up and get out? I can take my tractor and go down and plow or open? Because people gotta get in and out. I mean, that's what somebody was telling me. Now, I don't know if it's true, you gotta tell me.
I don't think there's any problem to open, plow and snow off the road.
Okay, that's all I had to know, I had to know.
I asked Jim that.
Hey, Jim, are you my buddy or are you a gift to me?
He can say.
She was like, I'm not in this.
Well, no, I don't know. I'm just gonna, I, I won't take your day off.
Petition for your road and then.
Yes.
Yeah. But only thing, Mike and the guys might be mad at me, but I, I don't know how many's gonna get mad at me. And I'm the type of guy, I like to be fair and I like to treat you.
Well, and our chairman.
I don't want to diss them off and make you.
We don't increase the taxes, we don't, that's all run by the state.
Yeah.
We have to abide by that.
Well, where's your gravel pile?
Bring that to me.
Just keep that a secret.
Okay, I'll try my best, I don't want to take your day off, but.
No, that'd be, petition would be that first mile out. Yep. Road in.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll try, I'll see what they say. Okay, well, I don't want to take your guys' day. But I, you know, I was thinking, the mayor is here. Where's, I thought you guys probably have some hamburgers or something.
They're down at Curly's.
So are you?
No.
Oh.
We're charging it to the mayor.
There you go.
Hi Drew. I'm gonna put John Hope, or on speaker, okay? Okay, you're on speaker.
Hi Commissioners.
Hey Drew, how you doing?
Good. I hope everything's going well for all of you as well.
Oh, can't complain, nobody will listen if we do.
I'm sorry, what?
Nobody listens in my world either. Um, so, okay, I've got four separate topics I just want to give a quick update to all of you and make sure you're aware of what's going on. So the first one, as you all know, that Newcastle BLM is revising their R and P. They have not initiated scoping. We're waiting for the notice of intent to come out, which should be out any time. They expected it in May and headquarters in DC didn't get it out. So that scoping process hasn't started yet. Um, but we have had a sneak peek into the preliminary alternative. So I will be drafting comments for you and Commissioner Todd, I'll probably have a few questions on that as we draft the comments. But once the notice of intent is filed, we'll have thirty days to get our scoping comments in. So I'll be drafting comments for you once that notice turns out.
Okay.
Um, there were some public meetings that did happen in the middle of May, anticipating that it was gonna be during the NEPA process, but it wasn't. So they'll probably have some additional scoping meetings, um, in Lusk, maybe in, and probably Weston and probably in Newcastle, because that's where the office is, and possibly again in Sundance. So we'll be watching for those and we'll notify you as, as those come out. And then the last thing I wanted to tell you on the, is for the BLM and the Black Hills National Forest stuff, we did get Jeannie Wayland's contract approved for, for both counties and both of those projects. But Jeannie will be helping me do some of the outreach in Weston and Cook County and attending some meetings. Um, I will go to all the BLM and the Forest Service meetings, but there's other meetings going on that she may assist with. And in our Sinurpa application, we did not request a cost share, um, as a request of both Weston and Cook Counties. So the state will be picking up her cost a hundred percent. So I just wanted you to know that your cost did not go up, but Jeannie will be helping us. Do you have any questions on that?
Uh, we pulled that off, thank you.
Well, I'm not gonna lie, I do say, these are three of my forest counties. You can't make them come up with all this money when we're doing four different NEPA projects at one time. So, they listen to me. Um, okay, any questions on BLM? All right, so for the Black Hills, there's really a lot going on in the Black Hills. Um, so we have not started the NEPA process yet. We're, before that. And we're not anticipating that the process will start till probably the end of this year or beginning of next year. However, there's a lot of stuff going on. One, since Jeff Tomac was let go, who is the Forest Service Supervisor, um, they've had an acting supervisor in there, Brian Harchett. And now they have another new acting supervisor coming in. His name is Carl Patrick. And he will be with us until probably October. They're looking for the right person to put in this place, that's, that's gonna get along with the cooperating agencies, the counties, the states, and the, and the stakeholders. So I've met him, I think he's gonna be great to work with in the next few months and hopefully they'll get a full replacement. So there are several meetings going on. We are cooperating agencies in this process. We are meeting, and I'm meeting on your behalf as cooperating agencies, um, in every two weeks before, or every month with the Forest Service. So we are communicating frequently with them. Um, let me just ask you, is the media in the room?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the, the final assessments have been delayed slightly. Um, they're going through headquarter approval right now. They were hoping to have those out to us and then the public at the end of May, that didn't happen. So they are looking to, um, get those out hopefully by the end of June. They will be final assessments, so we will not be able to comment on those. But there will be a lot of work to do to review those, to see what they changed, to identify our data gaps, and then make sure that whatever information we have that wasn't included, that we get that information to the Forest Service so that they can, um, respond to, or we can include that in the NEPA process. So there's still gonna be a lot to do. And Jeannie and Caleb Carter will also be a big help. And the Weston County Conservation District is also a cooperating agency on this document. So the Conservation Districts are gonna be really helpful as we move forward as well. Um, and then the review team, just to let you know, is gonna be myself, Jeannie, um, Commissioner Todd and Commissioner Beavis in Cook County will be included. Sarah Anderson with the Conservation District in Cook County, Caleb Carter, and then Dick Terry with State Forestry will be the review team for you. So if you have any other ideas of anyone you want me to loop in on the review team, just please let me know. Um, any questions on the Black Hills?
I don't see any.
Okay. Moving to Thunder Basin, I don't have much to report there, but to let you know that the Forest Service, we have worked with the Forest Service and the implementation of the plan has been fully funded for 2023, which means control is gonna occur in, in management area three, six, seven. Site management will occur at some level. And mapping will occur this year. We are still looking to funding opportunities, um, for twenty-four and twenty-five, but we will be funded fully this year. And then we're working on trying to find some other ways to reduce costs for the implementation on an annual basis. Um, that's really all I have there. Are there any questions on Thunder Basin?
Nope, don't see any.
Okay. Moving on to State Grass. So you are participate, participants in cooperating agencies in this effort. Um, I think you're all aware by now that the Wyoming County Commission Association has decided to hire two consultants, myself and the BJ and A out of Montana. We have split the state in working with our counties. So I will have all of you on the eastern side of the state, since I work with you anyway. So that makes it super easy. I'll be your point of contact. We have a cooperating agency with the BLM on Wednesday, June seventh at one. Um, Commissioner Todd, did you get that notice?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I don't know if they have those pens, but at least you're getting the notices, because we have some problems with that, so, um, I'm glad you got it. The other thing that we're doing is, um, the Game and Fish, through the State Grass Implementation Team, is initiating an updated mapping effort for core habitat areas around the state. They've made suggestions and have sent them to the local working groups. You are in the northeast local working group area. I think Becky, I asked you to distribute a map to the commissioners before this call. Did you get that message?
I did not. Did you just send it this morning?
I did send it this morning.
No, I didn't get it.
Oh, okay.
Do you want me to go make a copy of it for them?
Yeah, because I need to come look at some areas and tell me if there's problems. Do you have the map, Becky?
She's running to get it.
Okay, that's awesome. So what the Game and Fish has done is they've looked at the existing core areas and they've identified, you know, based on historic information that we've been watching these areas, based on flood counts, based on fires, based on droughts, based on energy developers, based on housing development, et cetera. And they've made some recommendations to these core areas. Some have been expansions, some have been deletions. But there are some things in Weston County that I just need you guys to look at and tell me, um, how that affects you, or if it affects landowners, or if it's over the top of a development area. So those will come in a minute. Um, but this is, so the purpose of this for the Game and Fish, I believe, is that they wanted to get the most updated information they could before we started the BLM effort. Um, so all the northeast working groups are working on it now. Then in June, I think around the fourteenth of June, there's gonna, there's gonna make it available for public comment. And if the press is quoting me, they need to call the Game and Fish and get the right information. Because I'm not quoting the core information. Um, and then Beavis and the Game and Fish will have a meeting in Lander on July, on July sixth and hoping to finalize this map. So through WCCA, we will be working to provide comments from the counties that we represent on this effort before July sixth. So that's why I, I want you to, to look at the map and tell me if there's any complications with as is proposed, so I can make sure I get your comments correctly. Are there any questions on the State Grass process so far? Right now, we're not in the BLM process with mapping. That's strictly Game and Fish. But we are having cooperating agency meetings, uh, with the BLM on the NEPA side. So there's two different things.
I don't think so.
Okay. And I assume Becky's not back yet?
Yeah, she is, yep.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, if you look on the map and help orient me, because it doesn't have county boundaries on it, but if you can look at NE, the northeast of L, as in Larry, and I, and NE J, as in Jacob. If you could look at those two areas and one, tell me if they're in Weston County. And two, tell me if they're problematic and if they are, why?
NE J is probably close to that Finn Shirley Field. And NE L.
And then here, Whitfield.
Finn Shirley Field, I would guess.
Pretty close.
And NE L appears to be right on the edge of the county line. It's Cook County.
So is, is other than Weston County?
It's more in both.
Um, yeah, it's close. I, I think NE L might most wholly be in Weston County. But it looks like the interstate just misses it by a mo, a couple miles there.
Okay. So is that gonna be mainly private surface, to the best of your knowledge?
Look in a minute.
And is the Finn kind of field, is it a oil, gas field? What kind of field is it?
Oil, gas.
Okay.
So here's the, it almost looks like it's power up just right here in North of Austin.
It was following the interstate there, right out of Gillette.
Mm-hmm. And then. Last one, Cheltenham line. That's right.
See, that looks like it's on the north side of five eighty-five.
Which one?
NE L.
Isn't that one sixteen, or is that Highway sixteen going right through it?
No.
Where it hits Morcrone?
Right there, or Sundance would be right there.
No, that's more crap.
You sure any, like Newcastle's clear down here. See, here's eighty-five.
Yeah, but that's the interstate going right through the end on that NE L.
Yeah, that's the interstate.
Sundance would be over.
It's gonna be right in there. Isn't that five eighty-five coming right up here, following that parallel?
That is Highway sixteen between Newcastle and up to, to Morcrone.
Okay, that is sixteen. Yeah, that is all in Weston County there.
It's real close to it, yep.
So L is all in Morcrone, or all in Weston?
Uh, I, I'll say it's awful close, yeah. And it's.
Is J in Weston?
Yeah, I would say it probably is. The Cheyenne River is right on our southern border down there and it's fairly, fair distance north of the Cheyenne River.
Yeah, it is, I can see that on the banner, okay.
Yeah, but you can see where the.
So.
Lusk fans off right there. Yeah, if it's, if it's not all in Weston County, it's, majority of it is for sure. Yeah, if it's, if it's not all in Weston County, it's majority of it is for sure. The very tip of it might be.
So let me start with NEJ. So the oil field, um, it gets over the top of the oil field. But here's one of the problems we've had with these core area expansions is you've got companies that have been developing their development plans around core area. So they've been going after leases and permits and expansion and whatever it is they need to do outside of core. So now all of a sudden in twenty-three, we're looking at expanding in some areas, which is right over the top. It was companies have been putting in place for the last few years, thinking it wasn't core and now it may be core. So I just needed to know if that's an applicable argument for J.
It's really, it's a tough argument. You know better than this map is, you know, that's the problem. It'd be nice to give us a little better detailed map of where your county lines and uh county roads are to decide, to decide where it is.
Well, let me see. I've got this. Let me see here. So. So on K, they're looking at it for bringing into the expansion. And they just have ads and really don't have, I don't have any detail on my spreadsheet. But on I, they're looking at bringing this to be, but that habitat might have been impacted on, oh, you're not on I, no, no, sorry about that. Um, so C, that's just an add L, bringing this in less. Oh, it says Upton Industrial, made a way through highway, so that's for L.
Upton Industrial, what again?
Is it L?
Uh, the Upton Industrial Highway is the note I have on L. Which what you're telling me is there's any, in the Morecroft Upton area.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other part of this was um, the impact with private property, private surface. Because this effort is done so fast, there's some concerns that there hasn't been the appropriate outreach to landowners. Um, so one of our comments with, at least with the Campbell County areas has been we need to do a better job of reaching out to landowners before we finalize any expansions in any of the areas. I assume that applies here. Because is L and J, is it, do you think it's private surface? If it's not, what else would it be?
J is going to be a lot more likely to be government.
Okay.
Uh, L's going to be a mixture.
Well, it's a mixture. Okay, that's helpful.
Um, probably more private than government on L. But J, I would venture, you're, you're getting down into where that prairie dog country is. And um, there's a lot of government ground down there.
Okay. That is helpful for me. Um, I think what's going to happen is you're going to try, so we'll be working with you guys to try to get comments when the public comment period is open. I'll work with my desk to see if we can't get a better map overlaying county lines and maybe um, surface ownership. And maybe that will help us identify these areas better. So I may, I may come back to you with some help on that, Commissioner Todd.
Okay.
Um, with that, are there any other questions regarding state graphs that we need to give you that would be true J?
Well, thanks. Drew, Drew, I was going through my emails and I didn't get that invite. I had one, I had one from uh, shoot. It was uh, some, maybe it's from MICA, but it wasn't for this meeting.
Okay. Um, thank you. It would have been, it would have been an email that you should have gotten, if you're on the list, you should have got it from Emmett Press with BLM. And it, mine came in this morning at nine forty-eight with the agenda for our meeting on tomorrow.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Okay, I will get that straightened out. Are you able to participate tomorrow? Or do you want me to get that straightened out for the forthcoming event?
I am a mix on that right now.
Okay, I got you. Um, I'll, I'll get this all straightened out.
Okay.
Pretty good on the distribution. We're happy to come with it, with me.
It says he got one from Emmett, but I didn't know.
Yeah, it came in nine forty-eight this morning.
Yeah, that's the one. Um, Commissioner Todd should also be on there, so, okay. Or did you, Commissioner Wagner? Would you guys send in your MOU stuff to the BLM? Did you identify you as the point of contact or Commissioner Todd?
Thought it was Commissioner Todd.
Okay, I think maybe both of you live on there, but I can't recall. I'll go back and look at that to make sure. So I think with that, Commissioner, that's all I've got for you today, but I truly appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, feel free to call or if you need anything in between or if you have any questions, so it's okay to ask.
Yeah, I think if they come up with a better map, more, yeah, please get that out to us. That way we have a better idea where we're at with that.
Yep. I will talk, I will talk to Michael and see if we can't get that done.
Okay.
All right, thanks everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Bye-bye.
Is she with BLM?
No.
She is with DRU Consulting. DRU? Yep. Where they've had a. She's out of Lander.
She's a consultant that we use.
Yep.
To help deal with BLM, state, forest service, all sorts of. Works in bureaucracy of everything.
She's paid with TRNFA money. The governor sets money back every year for that, for TRNFA, and she's funded out of that. She was a huge help with our fight against prairie dogs out in Thunder Basin. A huge help. Okay, next thing we have coming up is our two o'clock bid opening. You want to jump the old business up in there now?
Sure. I miss the miss. Sarah's not going to be here.
Yeah, we just got a note that she had a fatal emergency.
Okay.
She scratched, so.
Okay.
Discuss the EMS district a little more, what we want to do if we want a table or what, but it's, how do we get a little, little uh inquiries from other bodies, other entities and stuff. We had the discussion a little bit, it's uh a lot to go over if that ever, if you decide to do that.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry. I think that uh, in theory, it's a wonderful idea, but I think there are a lot of hurdles. We have major rules and it's not going to fix it in the next four years either.
Now, if, if you did a district today, got it on the ballot, you would see money until twenty-six. At the best case scenario, like the way the timeframes come, by the time you get it on the ballot, get it approved, they collect money, then you don't give the money to them. And so. I think it's something maybe we ought to just keep in the back of our mind if it comes up, but that's kind of a dead issue right now. It's a time limit for now. Big one for now. It's always an option if it ever comes up.
Beauty of it is we can create it by resolution, right?
Yep.
And then if there's something that does need to happen. And then uh, of course, then the hard part is be doing it from the public to the voters.
Yeah, the way we would do it is this board would form the district by resolution and appoint board members. And then it would be up to those board members to move forward with hitting it on the ballot. I mean, that's, once, once a district is formed and members are appointed, then it's out of our hands and then it's into the board's hands. So. Yeah. And then if you did, and if you did, if you formed a district and it didn't pass the mill levy on the ballot, really wouldn't need your district. You'd have, you know, you'd have a district to kick things around. That's all it's going to do is be able to just kick things around unless it gets, unless it's funded through the county, but that's the, the districts were made to be funded through mill levies. Yes, we will. Table it, it arises again. Time already.
Did Marty send her checklist with you?
I have.
Oh.
Anybody who wants to follow along?
Letting season set. Go on this.
Tim, will I ever be here?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Steve Bruce, I'm the project engineer with the Red Orange here. Yeah, there should be one more column on this list here for the meeting because the pre-bid meeting was mandatory.
Now there's a column.
Yep.
And a line.
Pre-bid.
And pre-pre-bid.
Maned.
Here's, we only have one bid. Outside envelope was from General Services. And on the outside. I'd like to engineer this. They're even better at this than me.
Oh, it's all right. It's your, your choice.
And number two.
So there are two denims.
This one is number one right here. There's a bid bomb. Bid bomb appears to be in order.
Sounds good. I see that. Oh, yes.
Don't like to eat names.
Oh, no worries.
Subcontractors, it's like all there is.
Okay.
We have a residency certificate right here.
Yeah. Did you see any dinner food?
Uh, yeah, I just seen dinner number two, number two. I didn't see dinner number one.
There's, in the bid items, there was uh, information from number one was included.
Oh, the large right in there. Okay, okay.
That should be okay. I'd have to verify, but it should be.
Yeah, it's got all the validation and everything in it.
Okay.
Yes.
Hey, the total of bid price is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand and no change.
And they were at the meeting here. I have to.
Okay, so they were at the pre-bid meeting.
Yeah. One bid.
One bid.
Right. Well, I did a project about a year ago and didn't get any there.
Well, this DNA isn't good or sometimes it's good.
Yeah.
So I'll give this to you, give me, so you guys can go over it all, make sure it's all in order.
I'll just uh, uh, this next day or so, I'll go through it, check the map, go get all the documents and write a letter to, write a letter to the commissioners, uh, make a recommendation.
Yes.
Make sure everything's, everything's covered as supposed to be.
Yes.
There you go.
Yep. Any other questions?
Nope. These are bid openings. This is only one.
Okay, like I said, I'll give a, I'll give a letter to your office, your uh, short list.
Okay.
So that if there's any difficulties, hopefully we don't uh run into any issues. We'll, we'll make a, we'll make a clean recommendation.
What, I mean, what was your, thinking your guess on that?
It's close. I, I, I should have brought that with me. I did. I remember it was always too young for you.
Yeah, but right in ballpark.
Mm-hmm, somewhere in there, yeah.
Well, that's, doesn't throw up right flies and it's just close to the ballpark, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm not on the agenda.
Go ahead, if you got something to sell us.
I just brought all the stuff that I have for you. Does anybody want a printed copy of this one, Sarah?
Good.
Thank you. Email the other night.
Yep. And then I brought just a copy of. And in there, I put two flyers for the for trainings, um, the beef workshop that's on June, July eleventh and the fair schedule um, that has just the for each events on it. The fair board hadn't nailed down all of their, the rest of the events, but that has all of um, the for each side of events. And I don't know. Here is some extra copies of both of those flyers and the beef workshop one as well. So that one should be fine. They're going to come that afternoon and do a presentation to any of the for each and FFA kids that choose to, oh, sorry. Um, that choose to participate that afternoon and then we will. Um, that choose to participate that afternoon and then we will, from six to eight, they'll do more of a producer talk and talk about some different topics, so. That should be a fun day with, um, Shelby Rosasco, who's the U W B specialist, and Micah Vost, who is the Aggie Natural Resources educator in Johnson County. So that's where we're at there, lots of fair planning on our end, go on. It's gonna be here in, I think, my thing, forty-five days, which is crazy to think that we're that close. Um, which means camp is next weekend, so that's kind of our big thing, we've got almost a hundred kids that just started for camp this year between the three counties, so I'm super excited for that, so fingers crossed, um, escaped inmate is captured and we get to go to camp, because I think they canceled, or we're in the process of canceling conservation camp starting tomorrow because of the escape yesterday, so. Hopefully they'll have him captured and we'll get to go to camp, but that's big there. So my one question is, is, I know there's the three thousand dollars, like, set aside for Mal, like, for us to go to camp. How do I get that from my account to?
Mal Camp is the one that has to request that.
Okay, so they, they take care of all that, I don't have to worry about it.
Well, if, if they request it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I will, all of it, it was going through my notes, it was like, okay, Tony, you can-
The Mal board.
Okay, perfect. And then, so, any questions about any of that, four each is, we got lots of fun workshops planned for the next forty days. Um, we're gonna bring in, um, some people from outside to do a beef and a swine workshop, hopefully a goat workshop. We've got another sewing workshop coming, shotgun, county shoot is tomorrow, muzzleloader, county shoot is Thursday night. Went and planted flowers in Upton yesterday with prairie and pine, so hopefully you guys will all enjoy those as everybody drives through, the four each will have a great time last night, so. Any questions about any of that piece of it? Okay, so my, my one question for you guys is, since I did not go to state fair last year, since I was on maternity leave, I'm gonna have about nine hundred and eighty dollars left in my travel budget. Can I use that to buy some of the things that are on my wish list, like new drink coolers and a cooler and some organizational pieces like totes and shelving for the basement and some curriculum? Is that a possibility?
Well, I have a problem because she wasn't on the agenda and now she's asking us to make a decision.
We were asking, making a decision, we probably gave a lot of them to the people.
Okay.
But like, just the information like this, this is what you got.
I, as I was going through my budget for the next couple of weeks, I was like, I better, I just hate to leave some of that money on the, if I could use it for this year.
Things like that, where you're asking, you know, for decisions, stuff like that, should be on the agenda.
Perfect.
That way.
Um.
It should be advertised that way.
So the next, the next meeting's on the-
Two weeks.
Same day as your-
Twenty, so I will not be here, I'm at Showcase Showdown, um, but-
You could have on the agenda.
Yeah. Could you put that on there back to me, please?
Just give us, uh, a printout, what you want done.
Okay.
Then we can go from there.
Perfect.
Yeah, we have information to make a decision on.
Okay. Sounds good, I will do that and send that, so. Okay, um, any questions, anything, like, for the board training? Um, I will be in Larry those two days with four each kiddos, but Abby will, um, help make sure everything is set up at the event center, is there anything else you need? Perhaps we're gonna share it out on Facebook again, hopefully start getting some R S V Ps.
She put it out there, people.
Have, have you, have you gotten some R S V Ps?
Um, I know Jeannie Stone emailed me back yester, or the, oh, oh, had to have it on last week, because it's only Tuesday. Um, and said that she is planning to be there, and I did not check with Abby to see if she had many on her R S V P list, but we discussed this morning, just making sure we really shared it out on Facebook again this week and hopefully it'll get some traction, so. Anything else, the beef workshop, um, Nathan, I don't know, would you take some of the, or take those copies and kind of share those out? Um, I'm not sure how much of an ag list exists at the extension office, but I'll get it out on Facebook and-
Yeah, I think, uh, I was actually thinking about that a minute ago, how do we get this all in front of everybody that benefit from it? Like to build a better board stuff? Kind of send a flyer out to every, or any quick email to all the board members somehow, can you do that?
Yeah, just, uh, actually forward the, the flyers you emailed us, we just forward them to all of them.
Well, I'm making it all, they have to send me their budgets, I'll just send it to all of their secondary to get.
And yeah, I'll do whatever I need to do with my work with that, the beef one.
Where there hasn't been an ag educator here, there just isn't much of a ag list.
Contact this week?
Yeah. Yeah, and other than Facebook, um, I don't know, I thought I'd reach out to Micah and see if he would, maybe, because he's been doing an article for the two newspapers over here, maybe he would.
About to have F A groups.
Um, and I, I sent it to both of the educators, um, with the newsletter on the second. Um, but not separate, so I will do that as I start getting, do that for July events, but, yeah. Okay, perfect, I will send that stuff.
Thanks for the information.
Yes, you're welcome. Oh, yeah. I cannot believe we're back to four each camp, but it literally feels like we were just doing this for the very first time last year, like, five seconds ago, like, it was just like, oh my goodness.
That's fast.
It has been, like, it has been the craziest, fast year. That's Abby the other day was like, seriously, it's camp again, I'm like, I know, like, and said, we should have just done the same four each theme, or the theme again and just done all of that, so.
Big word, ditto.
Yeah. But yeah, I've almost, I think we took fifty-two kids to camp last year, so not quite double, but, which is good, so, okay, have a great afternoon, thank you guys.
Thank you, doing great, Erin.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anything else come for the board? Meeting will adjourn, two fifteen.